Welcome to our board meeting. July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. We will begin with the pledge of allegiance. Feeling wild and crazy. Anyone want to volunteer? All right, we got Melissa. Where is the flag?
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
She went all out. All right, Superintendent Corden.
Thank you very much. The only revision to the agenda is we have updated the title of item number five to better reflect that item number. We had it down there as a change in the school calendar. It's actually the school board meeting calendars. That's been amended. And just an FYI, as you probably noticed, that Director Bishop's not here with us this evening, not joining on Zoom, but hoping to see him at the next meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Any communications? No? Okay. All right, our next item is to approve the consent agenda from our June eighth. Well, our consent agenda includes our June eighth budget hearing and regular meeting minutes. The May thirty-first and June thirtieth policy committee meetings, recommendations for employment and licensed resignation, and the surplus items to the district. So the chair will entertain a motion. Second. Any discussion, concerns? Okay, all in favor of approving the consent agenda as published, say aye. Excellent. And the next item on our list is public participation. Assistant Superintendent Knee is on Zoom, so I don't know how well it is. So I can just manage that from here. If we have people who want to share thoughts, they just need to come and say their name. How long do we give them?
Two minutes.
Two minutes, okay. Okay, thank you.
I'm Cameron Pope, and I'm here today for the first time in four years, just as an employee of Roseburg. My time as the union president has come and gone, and I'm just here to thank the board for four good years of working together to make Roseburg a really great place. So thank you, guys. Board and that's cabinet, it has been appreciate unprecedented the last four years, and I I'm proud to say that I was the president and helped navigate this staff through this pandemic, so. That is, that is all, but thank you again very much for all of your time and effort and communications.
Madam Chair, may I say a few words?
Yeah.
So I I do, yes, I turned it on. Thank you for checking. So Cameron, Cameron and I work very close together through labor management and just want to give a huge shout out to him personally for his efforts. It was a lot of his efforts that allowed us to have a really respectful bargaining process. We resolved many, many issues that happened in the district around a table respectfully. And I just really appreciate that. So Cameron, on behalf of the district, I want to thank you for your time. I know that, I know you get paid a lot to do that, so. It's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Have any comments? Okay. All right, oh, look, it said two minutes right there. I can tell I definitely have summer brain. I'm not even reading the instructions.
I'll open the board nominee.
Madam Chair. First of all, I I know the board will echo what I have to say, but thank you so much for the past two years as chairperson, Madam Chair, boss. You did a wonderful job, and I know we really appreciate that. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I would like to nominate, and and it's an honor, I'd like to nominate the Reverend Howard Johnson as our next board chair.
I don't know the proper protocols, maybe.
Second.
Also. Discussion.
Any discussion?
So are you're stepping down or?
Yeah, every July, we, every July, we reelect a board chair. It's a one-year term. So.
Okay.
It can be, it can be longer. One year's great, two years is greater. No, um, so I've done it for the past two years, so. Nominated Howard to take the reins, so.
It's obvious that Dr. Bishop is very brave to not be here.
Yes. It's true. I did ask him about that. He, his dad was in town, but I was like, are you sure that's why you can't come? Um. Um, any other discussion? Okay, any other nominations? Okay, all in favor of Reverend Johnson as chair for the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year, say aye. Aye. You take the reins.
Thank you very much, Director Larson. It is, it has been a an honor to serve this community since two thousand and fifteen. And I look forward to continue to working together with all the board members and directors as we have for the past two years. We have a lot of challenges on our plate, but we are a shining example for other school districts within the state. They want to copy what we're doing, and I want to continue that. So thank you. So now the chair, I will entertain a motion for vice chair. Great, you got.
I would like to nominate, and I, and I've had this, this discussion, see if it was all right to nominate Becky Rebecca as vice chair. I think it would, she would help you out greatly for the first year, you know, and 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 I think this allow her a little bit of time to back, back off a little bit, because she has a family too, so that I would like to nominate. Rebecca.
Do we have a second?
I have a second now.
We have a motion and a second. All those ready for the question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you very much. So we will work together for another year, looking forward to it. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, we will now enter into the rest of the actions on the agenda. Item number two is annual housekeeping. We have things that we must do as required by law, and we can handle all of these items in one motion to approve all of the items listed of item number two, rather than doing them individually and collectively. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three resolutions as designated.
I so moved.
I have a second.
Second, I have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions?
No.
Discussions?
I have a couple of questions. When does the the contracting for the auditor? Is it?
We are still doing one-year extensions. It probably is time for us to put that out again. Right now, it's too late for the twenty, you know, for the twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two year, but it would be a good idea to go ahead and ask for, ask for votes for proposals.
And I'm going to go down the list, and and just because I asked a question doesn't mean I'm unhappy as a board member. I just want to get this in the record, the designation of our attorney. Yeah. So that on a year-to-year. And who, I can't remember. Who, who's doing the workforce?
Yeah, Jason was, Jason Montgomery, but Cadence is taking over Jason's role in supporting education. And they are our attorney of record. We have pretty limited. We haven't used them a lot, yeah, actually, but they are, they are designated legal counsel.
Would it be possible to have, hopefully they won't get charged an arm and a leg for them to come, but I'd like to meet who, meet our district attorney personally. So I think it would be, and I'm glad that we haven't seen them much. I'd like to see them, and then on the new review is, well, currently is our newspaper, because that's what we and it's based on circulation stuff like that, right?
Okay.
I had a question on that, too, on the attorneys. Is that like the auditors? It sounds like we accept proposals for the auditors, auditing companies, right? Are we do the same with attorneys with legal firms?
We did ask for proposals, I'm thinking three years ago, when, when Stan Clark, who had been our longstanding attorney, was retired. He did ask for proposals, and those were the way we did it, and the members of the evaluation selected Don Polo, and that one was Jason.
Yeah, I just wondered what the process was for that in the selection, and the same with the I know that the news and review is our newspaper. Do we consider the other, we only have two newspapers in the area.
It's not numbers of people who take the higher circulation newspaper.
The higher circulation, okay.
Yeah, we do that because just as a clarification, we have, when we need to post, there's times which we need to post. It could be a variety of things, right? It could be, we have an opening on the budget committee, and we have a, you know, public notice, and so we look at who has the highest distribution. That is, that's the designation.
Would reach the most people in the community, yeah.
Be there any more discussion? If none, are you ready for the question? All those in favor, say aye.
I have one more, sorry. On the grants, authorization to apply for grants, does that mean that only certain people can apply or, or grants applications can go through other avenues?
This gives the decision.
Authorization to apply for the grants that are. The grants that are listed, we do apply for other grants. It is not limited to, say, Michelle Need, who does do the applications on a majority of those grants. Some things I apply for, Robert may apply for, just depending on what the area of expertise is. If someone within the school district wishes to apply for a grant, there is a grant approval form that's an internal form that just asks some basic questions about matching funds and is it technology versus like facilities? And approvals given by Michelle and myself. And that's the internal process. If a grant is awarded to the district and it is of a certain size, I usually then will bring it to the school board and ask you to approve the grant that serves two purposes. One, you're appropriating the funds because it wasn't available at the time of budget. And two, that gives you guys knowledge of another grant that we've applied for and that we've received.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's partly because most grants come with strings attached, so we don't want people going out independently applying for grants that we might then later on be embarrassed by saying that we don't want to do it, so.
Okay, yes. Thank you.
We do, any further discussion? What, the the question, are we going to take these individually? Or we're going to take, going to take one vote at a time? No, we're going to do it all in one vote. This is a new and more efficient.
We're all about that, Charles. That's still my influence.
All the one. So all of the items that are listed under item number two resolutions, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? None, motion is carried. Agenda item number three, we're going to get a report on training and fencing, starting out with Director It.
So Ed VRL, I'm your safety coordinator. First, I foremost, I want to present our new district security officer, John Four, came to us from Joe Lane as a side op there and has, was a supervisor manager for the mayor. Okay, so we've been tasked with tasked with with the current situation going on in our, in our country and directed from the board to look at different safety measures and safety mitigations and methods for our safety team. Our safety team consists of our superintendent director, the chief operations director, and physical class manager himself. And so what we came to conclusion with is we have this program called I Love You Guys. And it's in your package. It encompasses all different types of safety measures, not just active aggressor. Currently has home, secure, lockdown, evacuation shelters. So it basically encompasses not only active aggressor, but from a chemical spill to you know, a student having seizure or a staff member. The good thing about this program, it was developed from an active shooter that occurred in Colorado. And there was no uniformity to the rehabilitation. And so his parents, who lost a daughter, decided to make this program called I Love You Guys. The good thing about this program is our staff is very familiar with this, and this is something that we practice every month with fire drills and lockdown, blockouts, and the evacuations and so forth. We learn those lessons from, from Colorado and they're put into the standard response protocol, or sometimes called SRP, and we are working with law enforcement collaboratively for one common goal, for our students and staff, safe. The one thing that we'll be teaching our staff when they come back in August is we're going to redo this, I love you guys. We're going to be practicing all these different scenarios, especially active aggressor. But the one thing that we're going to add is we're going to add situational awareness. And it's going to be something to teach staff to be cautious in their surroundings. Always knowing your point of entry, your point of exit. Have a plan. Keep your head up, look people in the eye, avoid using smartphones in public. And if you see something, say something. I can, I can't preface that as prior law enforcement that many times that people don't say something, they see something. So we're going to teach all those different aspects of the artist. One thing that we discussed is added safety measures. We're talking about adding a fire extinguisher in every classroom for fire and other potential hazards that very much can be used as, as a weapon. Review with staff, I love you guys, as I talked about, standard response protocol, and give staff awareness and confidence to react to any unforeseen event. One other thing we talked about from reviewing these active aggressor incidents and studies is that we noticed that different blocking mechanisms are sold out in the market. And one thing that we talked about, especially with our police department, is that if there's an incident and they need to get in, that we wouldn't have keys to get in. So we have cut keys for our police officers, for every unit in Roseburg PD to have a color-coded key to have access to get in in case one of us are not there. And then I also talked to Douglas County SO and give those area units as well. The fencing and hardening, we had talked about seven-foot-high was slats. I put an example there. I think that one is about six feet, was my example, and it shows you the privacy slats. And we talked about why, why four feet and why seven feet? If, if they're a little shorter, four feet, five feet, they seem scalable, you know, for someone, so seven feet seems a little far to go in. And the reason why we have the slats is that you're not able to put your foot in to get over the fence. And so that's the reason, though, we put them out in Winchester a couple of years ago, and they worked really well with keeping you know, people away from our campus. We plan to add some wrought iron to the, to the front, and we, we want to make our, our sites look aesthetically pleasing as well. The reason why we don't go wrought iron around our whole site is that we figured out that students are able to still find us. So that's the reason why this, this slatted chain fence is safe because it's not a danger. Get into the vestibules. Basically, vestibule, we've been consulting with leaders in this area, and they're leading experts. And we saw a couple, and one of the places ECS, they had done one in Oregon City. And they did, this is just a drawing of Fremont, what it would look like. And again, it was very important to us that it still comfortable place and aesthetically pleasing, they have light coming in, and it didn't look like a prison. But yet still keep our staff and students safe. The safety glass, we discussed about going forward with some safety glass. Ream makes a safety film that is able to prevent, you know, a blunt object hitting, takes the shards won't come out and hurt our staff. So it won't be bulletproof per se, but it will protect staff from different, if someone uses a blunt object. And second to last page is another picture of what it looked like and what engineers had drafted up. And again, the training will occur when teachers return from summer break. When all our security resources, both human and mechanical, work together as intended, and rest assured our most precious assets are focused on a safe and healthy education and the power for staffs on the ball. Any questions from the board?
The, the vestibule and the hardening, I remember when we built the high school, it was explained to us that the entryway was like a vestibule, it was going to be a way to control entry. But of course, the campus has, we probably know how many, I'd say a dozen entry points around the whole campus. Are we talking about fencing off access to those or keeping kids from opening those doors during the day or? And how long of a timeframe do we have before a high school would be secure that way, let alone in Eastwood, which has three or four separate buildings? What, what, what's, what's the world timeframe?
Right, and that timeframe, I, I, we don't have an answer for, because a lot of things are pushed back.
And there's supply chain issues.
Exactly, and that's, that's the problem. So, yeah, and a lot of it's going to be systems change for us as far as, you know, let's be hard in our area, let's be hard in our class. So the systems change, I mean, one, one, one access. So.
Train our people differently.
We have. The thing is, is that a lot of these, a lot of these buildings were, were made in the sixties and seventies, and we're not there no more. And things have changed. And so, so we have to adjust to the needs.
We have to train our parents differently.
No comment.
Two questions with regard to training. Are you going to keep a list so that you, we could ascertain all of the people who need to be trained, receive training?
Yes, yeah, we will be honestly, I, I foresee it, I haven't talked to our safety team, but I foresee it as really training. I don't see these events going away.
Let me understand correctly, if I may, you talked about having a hard key. But the, what happens if we have a disgruntled employee? How difficult would it be to change all those keys as opposed to going to an electronic key where you could change it more instantaneously than having a hard key reproduction?
And so that's a good question, and the question is that when you electronically strike, we're going to plan to put electronic strikes in the doors as well. And so if you have a system where they fail, then you still have a hard.
Okay. Okay.
So we're going to be bold.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, because I'm just thinking that you may have at one point a wide number of keys out.
Right.
And then you need to replace all of them for just one key being lost or dislodged.
That's a good point. I always was taught, if you have two, you have one, if you have one, you have.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, all right. Are there any other questions from Director? Be none, thank you very much. Next one, the item is fencing from Tracy. You're up, you're next. Are you with him? Okay. Well, I just thought you wanted to say something.
Thank you for having me.
There you go.
He may have an opportunity in the next agenda.
Okay. Well, if there'd be nothing else, but item number three with safety and facility, we will move to item number four with regard to fencing for six elementary schools. Madam Yona, on the clock.
All right, great. Asking for approval to move ahead with both the dollar amount and the idea of looking at the fencing for the remaining six elementary schools. During board meeting, you approved fencing proposals for Sunday so and green. This would create a surround of fence that would create a single point of entry, and again, once students are at school, the exterior or the field where they're walking across the building to the school, that, that gate would be locked. And so anyone coming after the bell rings can have to go to the front office. And with notable exception, these were the working on that one. This would create that single point of entry after the bell rings for the six elementary schools. We are at that point with the high school and with our two middle schools. Not all schools have six-foot fencing, not all, but this would replace all four-foot fences and and then bring up the undefenced areas to a seven-foot.
Your delete, how much?
How much? Our quotes, the Tracy, the sort of the quotes from the door defense and companies to submitted proposals to decline, and the current quotes are about two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for all six schools. It will end up being a few closer to three hundred thousand by the time we replace some of the initial chain link that was to be out front with the wrought iron.
I just wanted to comment, it doesn't say here, but I read it in the other packet, these are local fencing companies that we hired. They're, they're bids. I'd just like to congratulate everyone on that. That's a big thing, and also going forward, when we're doing these other construction projects, whatever we can do to get the word out to local contractors, plum electricians to put bids on these things, because we can probably do it cheaper here than we can hire a big construction company out of Portland or out of state to do these things. So that was great to see.
Be there any other discussion on this action item? This is an action item, we need a motion to approve.
I motion approve.
Do we have a second? I'll second. Do you have any discussion? In Portland, they're having a big stink about people fencing off one of the elementary school grounds, so that people aren't able to have their dogs run at large and soil the play, the play area. We've never had a policy really about that, and I don't want to ask, suggest that we have a policy. I just thought I'd say that there's an area that is ripe for controversy.
I actually would prefer to allow my dog to roam, but since you have signed up, many of our locations say no dogs on the field. Even with the responsibility at home, it's impossible to clean up all of the remains.
And there's lots of open space in Douglas County, inside school grounds. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other discussions? If not, are you ready for the question? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is to revise the board meeting calendar. We're with particular attention to March 2023. And as you recall, in one of our meetings in June, we approved a preliminary calendar, but we now need to move forward to Robert Freeman, you on the clock.
Alright, well, I'll give you the why behind this request. So this year, and I, I just want to editorialize a little bit. I believe it's worked really well. The board decided to go to one business meeting a month and one work session a month. In March, there's only one board meeting. In February, there's two. You have the first meeting as a work session, the second meeting, I'm sorry, first meeting as a business meeting, second one as a work session. In my world, because of Oregon statute, March 15th is a designated day that districts have to notify staff whether they're going to be licensed staff, whether they're going to be renewed or non-renewed. And so that date is very important. And it's not just you making the determination, but it's actually the employee receiving the letter indicating such. So like this year coming up, I believe the board meeting was right at March 15th or right close to that. And that would not give us time for you to approve that that night and then me running out and trying to give that notice to our employees. Which would mean we'd have to do that at the second meeting in February, which you would like to have that as a work session. So I'm asking the board if you would consider bumping that March meeting. Remember you have one meeting in March, a week earlier to allow for time to make the decisions on renewals or non-renewals, which would give HR department time to get that notification out to staff.
Any discussions? Do we have a motion to approve that change? Right here, second. It's been moved a second to revise the 2023 calendar meeting to accommodate the HR request. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you very much. And we will be receiving a new calendar with the changes on it. So we have to notify all of the media and other associations. Okay? Item number six, policy change for item section C through G. This is the second reading and adoption. Mr. Freeman, you on the clock?
So like I stated at the last board meeting, you have a very thorough vetted policy committee that is spending hours going through our policies. This was presented as a first reading prior and tonight. Policy section C through G is being presented as a second reading. And just for your remembrance, after you approve a second reading, then they become policy for the district.
I still move.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? All second. I have a motion in a second. Are we ready for a discussion? Being none, are you ready for the question? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The second reading had been approved and adopted. Item number seven. We have section I of the policy section of first reading.
That's me again. So. This is the first reading for policy section I. First reading gives you an opportunity to review proposed changes or policies. And as always, if you have questions after reviewing those, please send those out either to myself or to the policy committee and we can address those.
Just by way of clarification, the highlighted means those are the changes you've made.
Thank you for that.
I move adoption on first reading. Have a motion a second?
I would, yeah, I would like to. There was a couple of things that I still on, on section. I, are we on G? Yeah, that I, I felt like still needed to have a little discussion on. So.
That's the time we didn't vote. So we just did motions and now we have that. So you're perfect.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't know if this was the board time to talk about it or, or later, but I think we will be talking a little later in our policy meeting on it. So there's just some items that we're not yet. We're approving the first reading. So, okay, I'm okay with that then. We still have a little more work on it.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
And between now and the second reading, any director has access to those items and can be shared with the vice chair and myself and get it done.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? The being none, we're ready for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? First reading has been approved. We are now entering to our report section and first on the clock is the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, Director Johnson. I appreciate that. Chair Johnson. I have a short report for you tonight. Oops, that's not what I wanted to do. For the slideshow here. Alright. Let's play this thing. Alright. So, first of all, I want to echo some of the comments today. I appreciate very much your work this year as a board. Collectively and also want to particularly thank now vice chair Larson for your work is, is over the last couple of years as our chair and also Chair Johnson, your work as a, is the previous vice chair and, and the whole board. I appreciate your steady hand over the last several years as you've helped guide the community through increase in achievement and support for our kids and families and, you know, moving through the pandemic. So tonight, I want to just talk about a couple of things real quick. I've had the chance to get out to our school sites and see our awesome kids. And we've got some great things happening in our buildings. There's a lot happening. We have extended school year happening. We have summer learning happening. We have credit recovery happening. Lots of great things with kids. We're currently serving over a thousand kids this summer. And it's worth noting that the intent of this is really to minimize the opportunity and access gaps that exist in our community. So we have, we've had families in the past who probably would love to do some kind of summer learning, but it's expensive and there's not transportation and maybe there isn't money to feed them. And what we've had the opportunity to do this year and last year is open up some really great learning opportunities for our kids that are, that had, they have a ability to choose some of the things they want to do and learn in different ways. So if you were at Joe Lane today, you would have seen some kids doing physics through archery. If you were at Hugh Crest yesterday, you would have seen kids doing coding that are six, actually working with their B-bots around. So lots of great things happening. I appreciate your support on that and want to thank our staff. Several school districts last year and this summer as well did not offer, they had an opportunity to offer summer learning and they didn't have the staff top for summer learning. They didn't have teachers to teach. They didn't have leaders to lead. They didn't have bus drivers to drive. They didn't have nutrition staff to prep meals. And it is a tremendous honor to work in a place where when there's a chance to improve the outcomes for our kids and help our community, this community rallies for that. And so I want to thank our staff for that. It's also worth noting that we have through the help of Kyle and his team, Lunchbox Express is back up and moving at this, at our, our off school sites, those four off school sites as well as our school sites. And we were, we've been able to serve a thousand meals in the Lunchbox Express, which is great, a little over a thousand meals in June, since we have concluded our last school year and we expect that number to continue to rise as the price of food has risen. And that's any, any patron in the community, whether they're enrolled in our school or not, eighteen and over can have lunch for free at these sites. The last thing I want to talk about briefly is, so Ed tonight and Tracy was here to help and, and we have been moving forward on a variety of projects district wide. It's worth mentioning these three tonight. You've heard something about these tonight. But I think it's also important to, when we talk about safety and security and I, I, I want to commend the board for making this a priority. Keeping our kids safe and our staff safe should always be a priority of a school district. Our schools should be places of refuge for our kids. And unfortunately, across the country and the world, they are not always that way. So we want to be thinking about that. There, for good reason, tend to be a focus on an active shooter. And that is a reality we need to train for. And we do train for that, but we're really taking a broad view of safety. If you are Dr. Weber here and the principal of the high school, any given day of 1,800 students and 125 staff members and other volunteers, 2,000 people in the school. And we need to think about how we operate with the people we currently have. What do you do if you have a dysregulated parent? What do you do if you have a student who is having an issue? And so the staff training that Ed talked about, it's important to have a standard response protocol so we can move quickly on any incident. It could be an earthquake. It could be a chemical spill. It could be a seizure. So we are going to work on the staff, the staff training component and it will not be isolated to just a single incident with a perpetrator with a weapon. It needs to be that. And we have, so we have, we have a, we're going to take a broad view of safety and security, which is, which is smart. That in mind, we are moving forward at the board's request. And I appreciate that request of moving forward with the vestibules. Tonight you saw a rendering for Fremont Middle School and that we're going to have a parallel rendering for Jolaine Middle School. These are easier vestibules to build because there's really no engineering. It's mostly architectural shifts that need to be made. Although there'll be a header here and there and a couple of minor tweaks. You're really working within a lobby that currently exists in those two buildings. Those projects worked out pretty well because we have, there's a current project there for seismic this year at Fremont. And there's a seismic, we have a seismic award for Jolaine for next year. So that being said, we are going to partner with a local architect. Paul Bentley is going to be joining us to help design a vestibule for our other existing buildings. We have some that are going to be a little easier than others. And I want to thank Cheryl who's and Tracy and Ed who've taken a lead on, on thinking through how we can do this. Some will move quicker than others, but it is our intent to move as quickly as we can in a uniform system-wide ed spec way. These vestibules will have, as, as Ed mentioned tonight, they will have electronic locking systems. We will move forward on safety glass. We'll also move forward on cameras as well as card access for the buildings that, that we need to be moving into this generation of key access where it can be turned off quickly if there's a disgruntled employee, if it's lost. So those are in process. We'll keep you up to date on where we're at with the, with the vestibule builds. You heard about perimeter fencing tonight. I'd just like to mention a couple of things about this. This was mentioned tonight. There's a debate across the country. There has been, and it seems to be since the Obalde shooting intensifying. And that is, you know, what do you do with fencing? At what point do you simply lock a building down in elementary school where it feels, you know, we could take, for example, fencing to say, what's adequate for fencing? Is eight feet better than seven feet? Is 10 feet better than eight feet? Is barbed wire and electric fence better than that? So with the fencing, I think we've hit a good balance here. We've hit a balance where we're going to go with the wrought iron fencing in the front of the building. So it does feel inviting. It does put a screen there to limit access, but does have a little bit more inviting feel. As Ed mentioned tonight, the perimeter fencing that you approved tonight is going to be uniform. We'll have, we're likely to have buildings that will say, I really want my school colors and the slats. So the kind of fencing we're talking about is chain link. And chain link with slats does a couple of things for us. As you heard tonight, it's harder to cut. It's harder to damage. It's harder to climb. We're going to move with, it'll be black across the district and that really becomes to have a little more uniform way it looks. And particularly as much as I'd like to match a school color in that fencing, if it, if there ends up being graffiti on those, and unfortunately, we likely are to see that, it can be cleaned up and we can match that a little easier. So expect to see fencing soon. We're due, we are glad we have local contractors on that. And we are again, taking a little broader vision of safety and security across the district. The other thing I just mentioned before I closed tonight is we are keeping a close eye on enrollment. So enrollment, as you know, has been less than predictable over the last two years. We, I think our district did a commendable job of opening a virtual option for families. And we've got a close, keeping a close eye on what that looks like. We're hearing rumors about another wave coming. There could be a high hospitalization rate. So we're going to have to, we'll need to keep a close eye on our enrollment for next year. I'm excited to see, it is good to have good numbers in summer learning. We have students joining us that haven't been with us before in summer learning. We hope that translates to kids joining us and we'll just keep the board in, and in the loop with where we're at. You'll receive those monthly updates on, on enrollment. I am hopeful that we can get back to what our enrollment was pre-COVID, that our post numbers will, post COVID numbers enrollment wise will look the same. But it is a consideration all of us should be aware. We've been able to run our organization with fewer students in the same level of support, which actually means have more support with less students. And that's been a huge benefit. And we've had some help from some funds to do that, but those are grant funds that came from, from the state through the federal government. But long term, that, that's just not, you can't continue to operate in that way. And so enrollment numbers coming up will be important as we move forward. And we'll keep you in the loop on that as we move forward. Director and Chair Johnson, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from any directors to the superintendent? Thank you very much for your information and sharing. It is now time in our meeting, but we ask each director to give their sharing and we can do this. Alchematized, Director Cotton?
Good, good information tonight. I'm hoping that the $16 million that we've implemented, 11 plus to five, we need tomorrow will be enough. I don't know with the economy, but I think it could start fencing. I can't believe. The best fencing, but this is crazy, but it is, it's, it needs to be done. Anyway, thank you to everybody for information tonight. And I'm glad that we are moving ahead. And congratulations, our.
Thank you, Director Cotton. Director Krimis?
Yeah, I was fortunate last weekend to attend the Oregon State School Board Conference in Bend. And there was the keynote speaker, especially is what attracted me to, to go and, you know, spend the time there was on family engagement. And I really feel like that's a, a real key, you know, in our strategic plan to keep, make sure we keep families engaged and even, you know, our fencing, it's like, ah, you know. And even, you know, our fencing, it's like, ah, you know, that, that is kind of a barrier. It, it, they talked some about that, that people are affected when they enter our school facility as to what they think they're going to expect when they go in. And they're already on edge. They're on uncomfortable ground. And so however we can help to make the schools more of a welcoming place for parents to come. And, you know, we're, we're trying to do safety too and make sure, you know, we're keeping all of us safe. You know, and some people, you know, sometimes look, look pretty sketchy. And you're like, ah, you know, are, do we know for sure if they should be here or not? But we have to keep our attitudes towards the families. When you expect the worst, you're, you're likely to get, and it, it exudes out of us, you know, our attitudes towards our families that do come. And so we want to just be sure that our district is, is welcoming to families and that they, they sense that from a phone call. Or, you know, if they're immediately going to be faced with, okay, ID, you know, check your everything. And they talked about maybe even having like some of your, your things that you try to do, events, doing them outside of a school place, maybe in a, in a church hall or somewhere that's not even a school facility so that they feel like they're on neutral ground. But anyway, I, you know, I'll share a little bit more, but there was one packet of information that they gave that was kind of a survey of how well you're doing on family engagement. And I thought I'm going to give it to Jared. And you can look at it and see if it's something that all of us could fill out and see how we think we're scoring on, on this particular area. Because the keynote speaker took a very impoverished, very low-performing school and was able to turn it around pretty significantly. But it was the vision that he painted for the whole district, that as a district, you would have to be kind of incorporated. It's well worth the, you know, if you, if you can pull it up on their website, if they post those things, I don't know. But that conference, the summer conference, he was, he was very, very inspiring on things like that, that we could maybe do better. So I was impressed and learned a lot from that.
Thank you. Vice Chair Larson?
I'm good.
Thank you very much. Director Lee?
Mr. Mohammed, his sentimentality. I saw an obit this week for. But that's silly. An obit for Richard Case. He was my sixth grade teacher in Hopkins, Minnesota. And I haven't thought about him in years. He was young. He was male. He was athletic. I'm sure he was the first male teacher I'd ever experienced. I remember he could hit the softball over the fence at the elementary school field anyway. And he got the boys and girls excited about physical things. He was in charge. That was the unit where they taught Minnesota history. And that's just stuck with me all this time. So I just want to say thank you, Mr. Case.
Thank you. Director Kirkland? I just want to echo what Director Cotton said, that I'm thankful to Ed and everybody for moving swiftly on all these items. Giving the contractor just to come out and get a bid in the middle of summer is a, is a task on itself. So thankful everybody for that. And I think it's the right decision as he stated, that's, he said, that's the most important, quickest thing that we need to do so to get that moving and going. And seems like you guys thought about it a lot more than I could have ever thought goes into fencing. But, you know, the height, the size, the different opinions. So I just want to thank everybody who was involved in that.
Thank you very much. The last, I'd like to thank Director Larson. Allowed me to serve under her for two years, and now she's looking forward to serving with me this year. We developed a very professional relationship that allowed the district to succeed. And it is our focus that we want to continue doing that. And I need the support of all six of you to make sure that our transition and growth is on focus and on mission. Is there no other item before the, the board? We will call an adjournment of regular session. We will take a five and a half minute reset and we're going to any day of the session. Five and a half minutes. And now we will reconvene in regular session. And we have before us an action item to adopt the board superintendent operating agreement. Do I have a motion? A second?
Second.
Second, I have a motion and second in discussion. See, no discussion. Are you ready for the vote? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? There are none. Motion carried. Our next meeting is scheduled for August 10th, 6 o'clock here in the administrative office. We wish you a great evening. See you then. Meeting adjourned.